Introduce Dr. Jawed Iqbal. Most of you all know him very well, there's no need of an introduction. I was asking how do I introduce him, he said just say Abdullah is here. I'm like yeah, Masha Allah, this is a very humble way to say but Alhamdulillah he's got a very good profile, long profile, but we will keep it short. Right, you must have read it in the social media. Dr. Javed Iqbal is a distinguished surgeon and an inspirational figure, whose remarkable career spans decades of education to both the medical profession and the art of motivating others. Beyond surgery, Dr. Javed Iqbal has cultivated a talent for motivational speaking, leveraging platforms like his influential YouTube channel. Professor Javed Iqbal is here to inspire audiences globally. He's been Masha Allah, very busy, he's been traveling around the metroplex in the epic area. Brother Mujeeb has helped us to bring him to ICI from Wataga. I mean, he is very thought-provoking, deep-thinking, right? If you have not listened to his lectures on YouTube, you're missing out. So without further ado, right, his topic Insha Allah is going to be emotional intelligence of Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. I have also requested him to see based on how it goes if he can inject something about stress management. Because I don't know if you watched his YouTube with his discussion with his son. He talks about stress management in about four, five minutes, but I will leave it up to him and request him to please go ahead. So we are thinking about give or take thirty minutes of a session and then we'll Insha Allah, we'll have a Q and A after that, Insha Allah. Jazakallah Khair, Assalamualaikum.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullah. Am I audible in the back and to the sisters as well? Alright, okay. So when we were driving here, brother Mujeeb said that many of brothers here, they go to with Tablighi Jamaat. And I remember in my medical school times, I was very regular in Tablighi Jamaat as well. I went for forty days and sixty days. And the first lesson they used to teach was that whenever there is a talk, please come closer. So I will request you to please come closer. Those which are there on the, on the sides, please come closer. Jazakallah Khair. Now before I start, I must express that how happy I am here. This is a kind of a very ritualistic sentence which speakers they utter before start their speech. But I'm really very humbled, very happy to come here. Because when brother Naveed was just taking me around to show me the school and the facilities, I was becoming very sad in my heart because I come to a country which is supposed to be an Islamic country. But masjids there in, in my country at least, is just a part-time playing place. And nothing more than that. And once a prayer is off, we just lock it. And not only we lock that physical facility, we also lock our Imaan inside. And when we go out, we don't take Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala with us and we don't take that Imaan with us in our shops, in our businesses, in our schools and in our homes. So here, but here, which you know so-called is Kafir Mulk, but you brothers are Masha Allah and sisters, I'm sure, and the whole team. Brother Naveed showed me all that, you're doing a remarkable job. And I'm very sure that if someone is living in the neighborhood of this mosque and he has come from India, Pakistan, Bangladesh, other country, and he's worried that he's living in a Western society. I think if they are living close to this mosque, their children are more safe than when they are in Pakistan or other country. So may Allah accept your effort, may Allah give you Ajar for that, not only in Dusuniyah but hereafter. And I'll also be, you know, not fulfilling my duty if I don't thank my dear brother Mujeeb Kazisab. Because he is also involved in North Texas Islamic Council. And I learned that this organization is connecting all the mosques together. So this coordinating, coordinated work actually is very, very essential to unite our brothers and to solve their problems related to grooming. And he has also asked me and we discussed that how we can use his network to coordinate with, you know, other brothers and sisters throughout United States of America. So anyway, the thirty minutes have been given to me and I have already consumed four minutes out of those. And I'll try my best that I will not talk about the theoretical concepts about emotional intelligence, that what is the definition, what are the theories. My objective will be that at the end of this thirty minutes talk, we have at least some take-home messages. And when we go home, we have some skills in our bag which we can apply straight away. See, we humans unfortunately consider us as physical beings. This is because apart from our species, rest of the species are predominantly physical beings. And since ever we are living with them and we also consider ourselves as physical beings. And then when we open our eyes in our family, in our home, our value system, except of those who have really understood it, is such that the most important thing in our life and the most predominant value in our life is money or the things which can be bought with the money. See, if you have got four children, one of them is a doctor, another one is an engineer, other one has a blooming business and fourth one though is very pious, is very simple, very humble, very honest, very dedicated, but he's not earning enough. So we always think that the other three are successful and this one is not successful. And there is a reason to believe it because in our whole system, in our neurons, it has been for centuries, it has been infused that the one which has more money, one which has got more, you know, objects which money can buy, if someone possesses, you know, most of them, he's a successful person. I'm not against money, I'm not saying we should not earn it, we must earn it. All of you must be billions Insha Allah, so that we can use it as a mean to achieve a purpose. But our problem is that we make money as a purpose. For example, if you have to cross a river and you don't have anything to cross a river, so you just go to a jungle, you cut some trees and then you learn how to make a boat. Now this is something very precious for you because this is, this was the only thing you can cross a river with. When you cross the river, you just take that boat and put it on your head. Because it was very precious thing, you worked very hard on that boat and then you keep that boat on your head all the time. Now this boat was just a mean to cross the river, this was not an objective. So what I want to say is that money and the things which money can buy, they are very important, but they are just means. But having a money is not a, not a question, question is what are you gonna do with this money? And if we earn money so that we earn more money, for that, we earn more money so that we can earn more monies, because of that, we earn more money, then this is that vicious cycle which will just keep us revolving around the physicality. And no matter how accurate, how meticulous our physicality is, at the most, we are at animal levels. And that too are very few because animals' physicality is perfect. No son of a horse, baby horse, is involved in drugs. He does not do any unethical activity. He has no problem as far as his financial things are concerned. Animals, they raise their children and they pass it on to the next generation with perfection. They don't need vaccines, they don't need to build houses, they don't need expensive clothes or the cars, right? So even if we do it some, for our physicality, we satisfy our physicality to perfection. Even then, at the most, we are at the animal levels. But Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has given us other aspects of our being. And since we don't bother about those aspects of being, this is why our life is deficient. This is why we have everything, but still we feel emptiness inside. This is why anxiety is our problem, depression is our problem, addiction is our problem, conflicts are a problem, unsatisfaction, jealousy, kina, boos, tawwatt, chut, you know, chugli, these are our problems. Because we just consider ourselves as physical beings. Now, physicality is at the most twenty-five percent of our being. The other twenty-five percent is our intellect. And about intellect also, we have got misunderstanding. We think intellect means more filling up of memory. Like a child who scores seven stars in all subjects, we think he's more intelligent. A person who knows everything which Google knows is more important, more intelligent. But that is also a misunderstanding, that is just a memory. Intelligence means whether someone is equipped with the skills and knowledge to solve the problem or not. If we can solve a problem, even if we have got very little capacity in our memory, we are an intelligent person. So this is, and the third one-fourth of our being is emotionality. And emotionality is related to our relation with so many phenomena. Relation with ourself, relation with our, you know, our dear ones, relation with those who are distant to us, relation with the whole universe. That deals with emotionality. And the fourth part of us is spirituality. Time is so short that I will just skip spirituality part of it. And this topic is given to me for Thursday's talk, Insha Allah, and that must, Insha Allah. But I would like to just, I'll, so I'll, I have talked enough about physicality, spirituality I'm gonna skip. But the in-between these two, which is intellect and emotionality, I'll just try to attach these two together. Because the topic is emotional intelligence. Now what we understand by emotional intelligence is that whenever we have to perform any of the activity or we have to develop any idea, it starts with a thought. So when I came, entered in this room, suddenly I had a thought and that thought was very pleasant. I saw that gym, I saw that basketball, you know, ground and then upstairs and the way brother Naveed greeted me and other friends sitting there, so I had a thought, which was a very, very positive and pleasant thought. It can be other way around, you go in an environment which is a hostile environment, which is not acceptable, so you have a thought. Now every thought, if you consider thought as an object, every object has a shadow. Thought, if you consider it as an object, the shadow of it is called emotion. Emotions as such is nothing, they are not the real thing, they are consequences of thoughts. If your thought is tall, the shadow will be tall. If the object is short, the shadow will be short. So if you want someone that he should not be angry, you cannot treat the consequence, anger is a consequence. If you ask somebody, don't get happy, you cannot force someone not to get happy. The only way is that you have to work on the thought. If thought is of happiness, the emotions has to be of happiness. If thought is of, you know, negative thought, then the emotion will be negative, right? Now if there is a negative thought and a person is not trained to handle it, that will result an emotion which will be negative. And if a person is trained, he can handle that emotion. But if he is not trained, he will charge that emotion. And charged negative emotion is actually called anger. And all the negative thoughts ultimately end up with the master problem which is anger. Like fear ends up to anger. I'm sitting in my home and my son went to, for example, in his college, he's supposed to come back at eight o'clock, he has not come, I'll just ask from my wife, why he has not come? So no problem, he'll come, there will be some traffic jam over there, nine o'clock, ten o'clock and he's not there back. And suddenly I just called to his colleague, he said he didn't come to college today. I'm worried, it's eleven o'clock, I just, you know, scaredly, I just called to an emergency. Do you have any young man coming over here? Then I'm just grooming, moving here, there and looking for my son. See, so what is the feeling, I'm afraid, I'm worried because I love my son. And suddenly someone knocks at the door and my son comes. What I do, where have you been? I'll start, you know, banging on him. Although I was, you know, I was in love with him, I was worried. But extreme of that thought will convert into anger. So jealousy converts into an angle, frustration converts into an angle, anxiety convert, so anger is the extreme thought, right? Now, how, so time is short, how we can control it? So I'm gonna give you, in, I know there will be, I will not be able to make a justice with the topic, but I will try my best to squeeze it in such a way that there is at least some meanings out of it. See, a person will be called emotionally intelligent if he can observe his thoughts. Normally when our thought process is going on, we don't observe it. It is subconsciously our thought process is going on. But a person who can actually observe his thoughts and as a result can observe and appreciate the emotions attached with that is fifty percent emotionally intelligent person. I am worried about my son, this thought is coming in my head. Because of that, I am afraid, I am little furious, I am little disappointed and I am little angry. If I can just verbalize it and can understand it like a neutral person can visualize myself having this, this thing going on in my head, I'm fifty percent emotionally intelligent. And to complete it, if I can understand what is the thought of brother Naveed and what are the emotions as a result of that, then I am ninety percent emotionally intelligent. And if I can understand the interaction between his emotions and my emotions in this situation, I'm hundred percent emotionally intelligent. So just, if you just reflect back, problems with our spouses, problem with our children, problem at our workplace, problems in the market, problem at the society level, problems at the international level are actually problems of lack of emotional intelligence. A head of state says something, just a tweet and suddenly all the army just lines up and starts killing people, innocent people. This is, it's the height of emotional intelligence, right? So I would like to repeat what I said. Thought is the center part of our brain activity. Shadow of each thought is emotion and emotions are consequences. Whatever will be our thought, our emotions will be according to that. And whenever there is an interaction, whenever the two people are interacting or someone is interacting with an idea, someone is interacting with a situation, sometime is interacting with a, with a spatial thing, something in the environment, as a result, a person has got an emotional condition. And if he's interacting with an idea or a person, then the other person also have an emotional, emotional milieu, emotional environment. And how they interact with each other will end up in the outcome. Outcome is not dependent upon the incidence, it depends upon how I react with it, right? And now how to control it? There are three take-home messages. Number one, just imagine a situation which is emotionally unacceptable for you. Example, your son did not perform well in the exam and you asked from him, that was wrong with you? I, I just came to know that you are bunking with the class and your behavior with the teachers is not good, for example said. And he started shouting at you. And he says that, okay Baba, I don't want to live in home, I want to just leave the home, I'm just giving you an example. Or at the workplace, you have got any situation which can emotionally charge you, the first thing which we have to train ourselves, the first take-home message is, never hold the words. Try to understand the feeling of a person. When your son is saying, I don't want to live in this home, I hate you Baba. Actually, this is a problem with the dictionary, it is the vocabulary problem. What he wants to say is, Baba, you humiliated me in front of my younger brothers and sisters. And in front of my other friends, you shouted at me, I felt ashamed, I felt small, I felt humiliated. You should not have done it. Now imagine if your son is saying this to you, what will be your reaction? Your reaction will be of sympathy and empathy and you will try to clarify yourself. Unfortunately, your son does not know the dictionary words to express this feeling. Instead of that, he said, I don't want to live in this home, I hate this environment. And if a person is not emotionally intelligent, he will hold these words. He is the one who said I will leave the home. He will say, my son, you know, I've just worked day and night, three shifts. Ah, you know, I did not consider my health, I was doing, and look at him, he said in front of his mother and everybody that I hate you. But honestly speaking, that child has a problem with the dictionary. This is in extreme form is seen when someone abuses others. An abuse, gali jaise karte hain, is the most ugly word someone can utter. And everyone knows kisi ko gali dena is very bad. And in, in abuse, you actually involve the secret relations of that a person, usually they are female relations and you commit that I'll do this heinous crime with one of your secret relations in all those dirty, you know, abuses. But honestly speaking, when someone is doing it, does he have a slightest idea of doing it? He has not seen his mother, he has not seen his sister, he has never done such thing in life. But then why he is doing this ugly, ugly activity? There is a problem with vocabulary, there is a problem with the words. Imagine someone is abusing you, gali dera hai and you just ask from him that, look, I know that kisi ko gali dena is very bad. So there must be something very serious going on in your head. Come on, sit with me, let me make a cup of coffee for you, please explain to me after all why you needed to abuse me? You imagine the situation, someone is abusing you and in response you say this. Now a person whom you can kill actually will become your lifelong friend. Although the act is the same, he is doing, he is abusing you and because of this abuse, you can kill him. People, people do that, gharet ke naam par they do that. But if you are emotionally intelligent, you will try to understand after all what compelled him to do that. And then the situation will be different. So my one thing, you know, which I would like to just request you, from now onward, please try to practice it. Whenever a situation is tense, whenever a situation is such which is disturbing you, don't hold the words. I will break your head, he is the person in front of everybody, he said I'll break. I have no intention to break your head. I've never broke, you know, broke anybody's head, but there is something wrong with my vocabulary. In the childhood, I was not taught how to express myself. So I want to say something very pleasant to you, but I don't find the words. And this is why I'm saying I'll break your head. So this is message number one. So are we on one page? Do you think that when next time we had any nasty situation, we will just sit back and we will not hold the words? And the second technique you can follow is, whenever there is an emotional situation, it is very logical that we feel it. Now you praised me, I said call me Abdullah only, but honestly, I'm a human being. When you were saying he's an accomplished surgeon, he's a distinguished speaker. So in my heart, Shatan was just, you know, inflating, inflating my, you know, heart and my mind that see I'm someone. So if you praise someone, he definitely will feel it. And if you do opposite to it, definitely someone, you know, will feel it. And the second part of our response is, think about it, just reverse it. When a situation is nasty, when situation is challenging, instead of feeling first, you think first and feel later. And with practice, we can do that, right? So I have just discussed with you two skills. Skill number one, never hold the words. It will save you from miseries of life. Never hold the word, just don't decide on the basis of what other ones said. But decide on the basis of that understanding, you may ask, you may recruit him to make you understand. If someone is very angry with you, you can actually take his help and ask him, you are angry with me? I want to understand, please let me know why you are angry with me, right? So just try to find, to understand, number one and second skill was, think first, feel later. Obviously, we are human beings, we are not computers that, you know, you, if file is there, you say file not found and if file there is, file will come. It will, it is not like this, human beings have got the feelings, that that makes, that makes us human beings. But please reverse it, feel later, think first. Skill number two, skill number three is, please spare fifteen minutes after Fajr, fifteen minutes after Isya. Maybe it takes, it will take some time for you to practice the first skill. Maybe it takes some more time to practice the second skill. But I would like, I don't, I won't, I don't mind, watablikijamaat ki tarah main aapka irada, wada main nahi keta khade ho, kare kare likhe hu is, who is, although it's a very good psychological technique for, you know, pursuing and motivating the people, so in your heart, I would like you to make one promise, that this third skill which I'm telling you, please start doing it from today. I can guarantee, I'm not guaranteeing it because of, I read it in the book, because of my personal contextual experience, I can assure you with all responsibility, if you follow it, after one week, you will start seeing miracles in your life. Just one week, seven days. After seven days, I'm flying back to Pakistan. So on the next day, you will have that miracle, you know, once I'll leave the, leave Dallas, you will have the miracle. And, and I mean it honestly, you will see the environment in your home, you will see the environment at your workplace. And that is spare fifteen minutes in the morning, fifteen minutes, you can extend it further. Fifteen minutes after Isya alone, sit back and technically that activity is called reflection. And just fast rewind it, your whole activity for the last twelve hours. I woke up, I did this, I did this and then I had this problem with my wife or my husband. Oh, should I have said that? If I have not said that, situation would have different. Okay, take a coffee, pencil, next time it happens, I will, I will not do that. This is what is called reflection. And technically what I read in the books, psychology books are, that reflection has three levels. One is reflection on action, that you, the, the, the reflection which I've just told you, that after the incidence has happened, you just try to reflect on it. Then one is reflection before action. That is, you're gonna do something and before that you reflect that, I'm gonna go in this tough situation, I'm going to have a meeting with my boss and there can be something tough, don't let me decide what I have to do. I'll not decide it right there, this is called reflection on, before action. And the third one, I can narrate a Hadith, you know, from of it is, the understanding of it which I have. If someone becomes very close to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, Allah says, I become his hands through which he holds the things. Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala says, I become his legs, through, through, through legs, he walks. In other words, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala starts guiding you. And this technically is called reflection during action. If we start practicing it, after seven days, you will develop a skill of having reflexes, you know, reflection. And I'm just talking, you are suddenly, someone will hold my hand, someone will hold my eyes, someone will hold my, my tongue and I will control myself, right? So this is, and you, if you start practicing it, you will see that it is a kind of a self-correction. It's a kind of a self-hypnosis, it's a kind of a self-recovery. And you start suggesting yourself and add the children, if you want to groom and you develop a good habit in a child, the method is that you create that experience as a contextual experience around a child. Then a child will learn it, but adults don't learn like this. Adults only learn when they realize they need to learn. And reflection is the only technique with which we can learn. So these are three take-home messages. First one was, whenever there is a tough situation, please don't hold the words, try to understand it. Second one was, feel, think first and feel later. And third one is, please start this activity of reflection. Hazrat Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam said once, and my understanding about it is, I, I don't remember the exact word is, if someone's today is not better than his yesterday, he is dead. Rahmatul Alameen has said, he is dead. How, you know, how strict it is. Because if we are not changed, if Javed Iqbal on Sunday was of a situation and on Monday he is not better, that means he is still living in the past and past is dead. This is why Hazrat Muhammad This is why Hazrat Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. So we need to grow continuously. That is what Nabi Ibrahim Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam has asked us to do. Continuously, we need to grow. And we cannot grow unless and until we don't work on us. And I think these are three techniques which will, can help us in growing to someone who is more, you know, beneficial for himself and beneficial for whole society. So I think it is twenty-eight minutes, right? So, you know, in this limited word, I can just squeeze it to that extent. Although, the Emotional Intelligence Workshop, when we do it, and related with Usfaa Nabi Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, it usually takes around two days workshop. And we have designed that workshop, and brother Mujeeb was saying that maybe next time when I'll come, especially for our youth, we can actually, can design it more structured way, organizational leadership, and they are all in relation with Usfaa Nabi Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. Emotional intelligence, look. Nabi Bakshah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam is sitting in, in the masjid, and masjid did not have carpet or, you know, marbles. It is the mud and the soil, and Badu came for first time. He became Muslim only few hours before. He just came here and suddenly he has a desire to pass urine. He just stood up, went in the corner of the mosque and started doing it. Now, Sahabah was very angry. But look at Emotional Intelligence of Fazat Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. You know what he said? "Your brother may not get some disease if you disturb him. So let him finish it." When he finished, he came, he did not realize what he has done. Then Nabikshan not even looked towards him. He said to another companion, "Can you go and put some, you know, soil on that urine of your brother?" He didn't even look at it, so that he should not feel humiliated, so that he doesn't feel that I am being judged. This is emotional intelligence. Right? This is what emotional intelligence is. When Nabi Bakshah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, you know, Makkah was conquered, and he was just there. So his head was touching, he was just in a state of humility, and he was crying. And his head was touching the camel, camel back. And also, Sahabah was saying, "Why you are crying? This is the time to celebrate." And the Arab culture is that when you conquer something, you just kill people. And he is crying and saying astaghfar. He said, "Why you are crying?" He said, "I should, should I not be very thankful?" This is emotional intelligence. And if I start counting incidences from Seerah Nabi Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, endless incidences which will tell what's emotional intelligence. Once, there are only two incidences, at least to my knowledge, which I read in Seerah where Nabi Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam was found angry. Otherwise, one of a permanent sunnah of Nabi Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam is smile. You remember? Smile is the permanent sunnah of Nabi Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. So if from now onward, you decide that even at the face of a very tough circumstances, you will just decorate your face with a smile, you are actually acting upon one sunnah of Nabi Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. Just smile, facing everything, facing the troubles and miseries with smile. Right? There are only two incidences. And both of them actually has taught us a tremendous, tremendous lesson. I'll just tell you one of them. One of them was, once he was, he didn't like something. To that extent that he was leading dzohor or asar prayer, where there are four rakaat. And after two rakaat, he said salaam and sat on the other side. He forgot to have completed four. And all of them knew that something is going on which is very, and no one actually dared to talk to him. And suddenly, they asked us, "Aubakar, to please ask." He went there, Nabikshan was just sitting here. He said, "Whether the commandment of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has changed? That means the salaam has become two instead of four?" Nabikshan said. And then he said, "Ya Rasula Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, what happened?" The only words he uttered was, "Nothing." And then he completed the salaam. So in the face of, you know, anger, he actually did not expect it. He managed it somewhere. And there are thousands for that example. So anyway, my dear brothers and sisters, this is, you know, you know, I just stop here. And I will just request you, Insha Allah, we'll get a swab, because after sitting here, we'll get a ajar of it, ajar of meeting with each other and discussing something which is going to influence us, our life, and will change our life, and following Usfaa of Nabi Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. But the real benefit will be, if at least these three things, you make a decision to practice it, and it won't come suddenly, you have to repeatedly practice it. And Insha Allah, it will show a very strong impact in our life. Jazakallah Khair, thank you for listening patiently.
Jazakallah Khair, Dr. Javed Ikbal. Insha Allah, what we do is, we'll do a Q and A session, Insha Allah. And before that, I forgot to mention this, on behalf of the ICI community, we welcome you and say Jazakallah Khair for your precious time.
Thank you.
Insha Allah. Let me know if you'll have questions, anybody here?
Yes, sir.
Salaam alaikum sir.
Waalaikum.
Insha Allah, sir, welcome to Islamic Centre Irving. Naveed has shown our facility, alhamdulillah, this is one of the very unique facility we have it.
Alhamdulillah.
Again, thanks for your time to give into the Islamic. Sir, question is that most, sometime, too much negative thoughts come into your mind, and how to change that? And sometime, doosyar ketbil aandin thodi, teri naali masliyam dinayi, you are going through problems and this and that. How to change that negative thought of that?
Thank you very much. Now, this question is a very, very important, universal, and always asked questions. And I've talked on this topic very extensively on my YouTube channel, but I will just respond to it. Yeah, no problem. So I will just respond to it. Just try to visualize me. On my right side is my memory, on my left side is my imagination. Right? My memory is a big back, baggage, big burden, lot of baggage there, right? My understanding, my religious teaching, my relations, good things happen to me, bad thing happens to me. And imagination is my apprehensions, my anxieties, my worries. And this is, here I am in this present moment. In this present moment, actually, there is nothing. Present moment is neither negative nor positive. Because the moment we think about the present moment, present moment just vanishes. And we go on to the next moment, and next moment is the present moment, and the, which we thought was a present moment, the moment it is connected with the thought, it becomes the past. So a person is worried when either he is in the past or he is in the future, in the, in, in the future. If a person knows how to be in the present moment, then a person can, even if he has an amputated arm, even if he has billions of dollars of debt, even his dear one has gone. These are all very, very uncomfortable situations. Right? But they are either in the past or their apprehension is in the future. So the only thing to get out of it, that thought process and unnecessarily thought, is learn how to focus. If you learn how to focus and pay your concentration only on the present, then that's the way slowly the thought, thoughts, they just vanish from your head. See, I, this is my hand. This is only useful if it is under my control. If, for example, it is not under my control and start hitting this brother, can I, you know, and if he just takes me to the police, can I argue that this hand was not in my control? No one will listen to it. This is your hand, so you are responsible. How we can say that thought is not in my control? This is your thought, but we have not practiced it. Since we have not practiced it, this is why they become out of control. Again, I can give, instead of this theory on loan, I can give you just one practical technique of controlling it. And you can start it from today. And that is, choose one person with whom you have the maximum interaction in your twenty-four hours. Maybe your spouse, maybe your son, maybe your boss, maybe of anyone. And just make a decision that when he is or she is talking, I will just listen to him, nothing else. I will just focus and just listen to him. This will be the starting point. This is a very simple technique which I have, you know, thought of and devised it, and I've practiced it. And, you know, so maybe, maybe one hour, you spend one hour in such a way that you are hundred percent focused. And slowly, you will see it will expand. And a time will come that when you are taking a shower, you are just enjoying the warm water soothing your body. And you will not be worried about your debt. You will not be worried about what your son said the other day. Or you are not worried about the medicine you are taking for your blood pressure. Right? So I don't know whether I've answered the question or not. If we learn to focus, and there are different techniques as well. For example, suddenly you want to learn it, just sit here and try to focus on three sounds coming in this room. Sound of this fan, that baby running. He dragged his foot and this sound. No, he, no, when we are doing it, where is the worry? So where is the worry? Are you worried about your debt? At that time, no. Because you are doing a focusing exercise. So if you, if you are anxious in the middle of the night, just do this exercise. Just focus on three sounds coming around you. And suddenly, you will come in that mode where that, and then you can expand it further. I mean, sorry for this limited time, but I can teach lot of exercises to you where you can do it here. Thank you. Yes, please. How to make a balance between our physical existence and our emotional thing? Yeah. Well, there is a term which is need. Your physicality has needs. You need to have your dinner. You need a sleep. If your shoes are torn, you need more shoes. You have to travel, you need a car. Right? You need to marry to continue your family. You need money for your children, to send them school. These are your needs. Problem arises when the sharp line between our need and our desire is blurred. And we confuse between our needs and our desires. And we think that desire is my need. When desires becomes your need, then you lose that balance. If our physicality is addressed according, your need may be that in each state of United States of America, you should have a home. This may be your need, actual need, because of nature of your work. So then it will not cause a problem. If your need is to have a helicopter, if it's your real need, sorry, this will not disturb that balance. But if something, if new model of telephone, new, new model of mobile phone is not your need, it is your desire. And you want to acquire it because it is your desire, then this will be a problem. When you already have three suits in your home and you want a new brand of it, then it's a problem. So in a short time, I can just respond this way, that very consciously, please, all of us has to just set up the priorities and see what are my needs and what are my desires and keep them away. The level of living a life is, the lowest level is living at a lust level. Anything which gives me an enjoyment, I do that. It's a level of lust. This is not even the animal level, it's a sub-level. Animals, they don't live with the lust. Please remember, animals don't live at a lust level. But humans have got a spectrum that they can live at to sub-animal level as well. Above love, above lust, the second level is desire. Animals don't live at desire level. You just, if you have an animal in your home, you just feed that animal, cat or dog, whatever. Once his stomach is full, no matter how tasty food you put in front of that animal, he will not eat it. They live at the third level which is need level. So lust, desire, need. If we live at a need level, we are at the most at the human, at the animal level. Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala expects us, from us, to be above need level, and that is called human level. And human level can be distinguished from a need level is, that at a need level, whatever we do, the yield of it is spent on ourselves, our spouse, and our children and our siblings. Then this is a need level. But if whatever is our yield is spent, this yield may not be money, this yield may be time, this may be our intellectual property, this may be our emotional relationship, it not just, our spirituality, not just the money. If the beneficiaries of our yield are other than those which are our close relatives, then we are at a human level. And honestly speaking, we are expected to be even superhuman level. And if you allow me, even at cosmic level. So, so that's my responsibility. Now, if delay is not because of me, right? Something.
Hello.
And by the way, if any brother or sister has to go, this is officially finished. So please don't, you know, just don't, you know, out of courtesy, please don't sit here. If you have any important thing, you can just go, it's perfectly fine. Actually, yes, yes, sister, yes, waalaikum.
Assalamualaikum. First of all, thank you very much, kya aap aaye yaapar. I am really fan of yours. YouTube pe kafi sunti hu main aapko.
Thank you.
Acha, question yeh hai ke, I try to do a lot of stuff for negative thoughts, jaise aapne bola na. To, I do breathing, yoga, whatever I can. Lekin, I don't know how to say it in English, lekin bas ho jati hai baaz waq. To, what do you do, like you just practice, practice? Or fir, and then sometime what happen, like you doing Emotional Intelligence with one person, but then sometime you take it off another person. Madhav baaz waq jo thora sah weak hota hai, jiska aapko pata hai ke ghustha sehle ka aapka, aap uspe jaake ghustha kar dete hu. To, what do you suggest?
Thank you very much. Actually, this is not one question, this is a battery of questions. So I will, I will try to club them together. Well, the most important thing is, that it is not, although the external events, they act like triggers, but the outcome is not dependent upon the triggers. The outcome depends upon our response. So if we think people around me are narcissist, people around me are the one who does not tolerate the things, they are not good people, they don't, they are not emotionally intelligent or not, if it is so, actually, that is their problem. And they are not obliged to change their life so that you feel comfortable. What is happening outside is not in your control, but what supposed to happen, your inside has to be in your control. Right? So whatever is the outer environment, you can't control it. So my suggestion will be that just work on yourself, and as I have already shared with you, you start this practice of self-reflection, and you take a copy with you and makes note of it. What actually bothered you during the last twelve hours? What was the thing which was really disturbing for you? And then when you analyze it, you will see you were disturbed. For example, you were disturbed because of the behavior of someone which was not according to your standards. Right? So that is actually his problem. Even if he is your spouse, even if he is your, I am, I am not saying that you should not be worried about it. I am not saying you should not be concerned about it. I am not saying you should not make a strategy to mend him or change him. After all, it is your responsibility to look after your children. But as far as your inside environment has to be concerned, that requires that you understand that I can only control myself. And I have to control myself in such a way that I won't allow anybody, even if he is very dear to me, to disturb my inner environment. And I can tell you with a lot certainty, Insha Allah, that it is possible, it is achievable. And I am doing it not as a theoretical knowledge with my personal experience. I am a human being, like all of us. I had very tough times in my life. I have periods of psychological un, unwellness. And I, with my own experience, I know that if you focus on it. And one more thing, my dear sister and brothers, please don't underestimate the power of Dua. Where your limit comes and you think, "I can't do anything," please trust that from there, the power of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala starts. Don't underestimate power of Dua. When things are not in your control, just hand it over to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala with full confidence and make a Dua to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. I hope I answered the question. Sir. Sir, I can, I can hear you, please sir. Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, I understood what you said. I will try to rephrase it so that all of us on one page. He said that we talked about those things which are not anatomical. We, we are spiritual or emotional, but do we have any scientific evidence for that? Yeah, the, one person I always quote is a person from United States of America. His name is Bruce Lipton. He's alive. He's, he was professor of genetics in Yale University. He was fired because of his work, because his work did not resonate with the conventional scientific teaching. And the summary of his work is in the form of a book, which is available on YouTube as an audiobook as well. And the name of the book is Biology of Beliefs. And that gentleman has become, his training is, he's a doctor, his training is on genetics, but he has become now like a dharvesh, he has become a dharvesh now, spiritual person. He said, see, if suddenly a snake crawls out from this chair, what will happen to me? My eyes will just wide open. You know, aapne suna? I will just get up, I will try to run. Or if I'm courageous enough, I will try to just squeeze his head. Now, all of these things, and my heart will be, start pumping blood more. And my blood will shift from my kidneys and my liver to my muscles so that I, and my pupils will dilate. Now, all these things, because of this external event is happening to me with a chemical change. Steroids, adrenaline, noradrenalines, which in America are called epinephrine and norepinephrine, they are just pumped in my blood. And that chemical change actually changes. There is a drug called serotonin reuptake inhibitor. If you, you, the, it's a famous name here, flocitin. Flocitin is the salt, right? So if you take that drug, you will feel high because there is a chemical change inside. Serotonin will change and you'll make you happy, it's a happy molecule. So in other words, our behavior is controlled from our inner system through change in our chemical circumstances and chemical environment. So there is definitely an anatomical connection with that. And I will just request you to please go through that book. It tells us that if we believe on something, this belief through our penile body starts creating those chemicals which are the chemicals which let our potentials to express themselves with more, you know, effective way. So whatever we believe actually, well, I do little poetry as well. So ek mera shere hai, my apology for those who don't understand Urdu. And then I realized, yes, this is actually exact translation of one of Hadiths, Nabi Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. And there is an incidence. Incidence is that when Islam was not spreading and people, they were just praying in hidden places, some Saba were going and there was a booth there, there was a statue there. And suddenly a person came and they just, and he was a sardar of that, you know, tribe. So Saba, he just, they, you know, take a refuge behind the trees. He came in front of that booth, he said, my most expensive horse is stolen. Oh my God, if my horse will not come, I'll go back to my tribe and I'll ask them not to worship you. He started, you know, you're talking to God like that. And Saba were just watching it and suddenly that horse came in front of him. And he said, you are the true God, thank you very much. I know you were the true God, thank you. And he just took the horse and went, and Saba was very upset about it. They went to Hazrat Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam and told them this story. And that is the Hadith which I quoted. Nabi Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam said, Allah decides for the humans according to their beliefs. That is the understanding of it. So our belief, and if Alhamdulillah Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has given us Iman and we have a strong belief Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala and way of life of Hazrat Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, then that belief will be translated in our acts. And we being a Muslim also understand that if in our life we don't see it, then we have got Ahrad and that will be enough to compensate that.
I have a question if I'm allowed to ask.
Yes, please. I have to go back to hotel and sleep, I have nothing. Now my family is 21,000 kilometers away, so I have no problem. So you decide.
Dr. Javed, well, the question is, I was discussing something with my son today about your topic. And how do we explain to kids what is emotional intelligence? How do you measure it?
Oh, thank you very much for asking this question. Thank you very much for asking this question. I'm so grateful that you asked. Not only emotional intelligence, but all of us wants to teach our children the value systems. You want them not to be greedy, you want them to be honest. Thank you very much, I'm so grateful you asked this question because if you want to teach greed to a child, how will you teach it? Just if you tell me greed, greediness is this, this is, this is, you know, these are the benefits of not being greedy, these are the disadvantages, child will not understand it at all. How you teach is, you tell him a story in which one of the character of the story was greedy. And without naming that this is greed, the consequence was such that he was in trouble. And this is how the child will have a concept that if someone behaves like this, he may not be knowing the name greed. But if someone will behave in this way, that is a wrong thing. So in order to teach children, this is why you must have heard the word Qasasul Quran. Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala uses the method of storytelling. So to children, it is very important to talk to them and talking with them the phenomenas. This question was asked by one of the brothers in, in the masjid and I told him a technique. And this technique is also, you can start it from today. And that is, once a week, to my sisters as well, please, if in your home, decide a day, for example, every Thursday from eight to nine, whole family sits together and starting from the young one, you ask him to tell us your expectation from each one of us. The youngest son, my expectation from my elder brother is this. My expectation from my elder sister is this. My expectation from mom is this. My expectation from my father is this. Then the middle one, then the elder one. Then mama says, my expectation from your father is this. My expectation from the elder sister. And then father says, my expectation from, right? This exercise has been scientifically proved that it results in an ability in everyone to learn the skills of expressing themselves. So if your children learn how to express themselves, they develop emotional intelligence. This is one. And the second important thing, if your children are less than seven years of age, there is only one effective tool. And by the way, that tool is neither scolding them, nor becoming harsh with them, nor becoming angry with them, nor very, someone who advises them a lot, not someone who orders them or talks a lot. That tool is only one and that is role modeling. When the situation came, where emotionally charged circumstances was there, but Baba behaved in a way that it was, you know, visualized as emotionally intelligent act, then a child will automatically learn it. So that is my response to it. Say it again, please. No? From the child? In the house? No, no, interrogation is counterproductive. Because when we, if you have to do an interrogation, interrogation should not be at the heat of the moment. Because I, being a doctor, know that we have got a frontal cortex and we have got a midbrain. Frontal cortex is the one which is responsible for critical thinking, problem solving, out of box solutions. And the midbrain is one which is our emotional brain, right? When there is a heat of a moment, the upper part is totally shut off. You just imagine a situation when someone is an argument. In a heat of a situation, arguments, they never work. If I do an argument, it will only generate a counter-argument. And that, and if we cannot have an argument and a logical answer to it, we have got a inborn skill of raising our voice. And sometime we compensate our lack of logical, you know, reasoning with raising our, how dare you like that? And suddenly the other person thinks this person has got a strong reason for his logic. But it is only loud voice, it is not the logic thing. So interrogation, if you want to do it, do it a time when everyone is just sitting in the relaxed environment. And then you say, you know, remember yesterday what happened? You were just throwing water on your younger, younger, younger brother? So I just want to see, you know, what was in your mind, son? So that is the time when his cognitive brain is working and your cognitive brain is working as well. Now this interrogation will be of some value. But at the heat of the moment, we can only spoil the situation.
That's a quick question and analogy as well. Lot of people love you and one of their way of expressing their love is to take you out for lunch and dinner. And you have only three meals in a day. Other day, we were sitting in a meeting and a lot of brothers wanted to take you out for lunch and dinner. And I asked them that one of the way that you can love him to buy his books.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And Mashallah, they all vanished at that time. So what I'm saying is that, how do I make my brothers who are asking for your time to go out for lunch and dinners and you have a very limited time?
How many of you are from Pakistan and India? Now, in Pakistan and India, in Pakistan and India, what happens is, tumare beta padha hua, ladu khilaao, right? tum paas hue, wo cake lekyaao. I was in Australia and you know, one of my colleague, he, he had a son, right? She had a son actually. And her husband was also working with them, both of them are friends, you know, colleagues. And you know, they said, we will celebrate it, make a how, we'll go for a bush walk, right? So we went for a bush walk. We had our own lunch with us and we had a bush walk in a place about 40 kilometers away from, from Sydney. And we had a bush walk and came back. And this is how we celebrated the birth of their son, right? So they were focusing on burning more calories and we focus on getting more calories. So that is perhaps our way of expressing our love. Well, thank you very much for pointing it out. I mean, all this work which I, you know, I have realized, I'll take few more minutes. See, I have realized, I'm a doctor. I have been, I'm a surgeon, practicing surgeon, and especially with Pakistan. I think this problem is global, but more so in Pakistan. We say that the problem is economic problem. We say the problem of the military-civil relationship. We think problem is of education, of health. But I have realized the most important crisis is not financial crisis, not political crisis. It's a crisis of character. And when someone, if you just give me a glass of water and suddenly someone just whispers in my ear that there is a drop of haram thing in it, I will starve to death, but I will not take this water, right? And all of you will do that. But the same time, when I have to sign a paper, I know there is 15% cut in it, I will just sign it. For me, it's not haram because it is the crisis of character. And I realized that this crisis of character is because of my generation. And I know from cognitive psychology that us, there is a statue in each stone, but you have to work very hard to carve that thing. But we can see, so we cannot do, I mean, at least I don't have a skills to change adults. But newborns and those who have yet to be born, if I work on them, then at least after 15 years, we can address the crisis of this character crisis. And that's the only way we can say. By the way, people who are ruling these countries as well, they are no way less than, you know, our people as far as character is concerned. So the crisis, the whole global crisis is crisis of character. So this is why I focused my life after retirement to work on that segment of a population which are potential parents. And in Pakistan, we have calculated there are 3 crore 75 lakh mothers. Mother, not as a verb, as a noun, but as a verb. Not a lady, a mom, even a father is included in it because one who mothers is, is a mothering, it's a noun, it's a verb. So if I go to, if I go in my life to 3 crore 75, I make some arrangement to go to 3 crore 75 lakh mothers, after 15 years, Pakistan will be the top country in the world. This is possible. So this I have made a kind of a mission in my life, may Allah give me strength to do that. So, so this is what the brother was talking about, that book. So you know, I, so I, you know, I have got books and the revenue of those books I put in this stream so that, you know, because I do it voluntarily. So but, so, so those things, and there is a platform called Mantoga where people have one-to-one meeting and I just put that money in that. Whatever I earn from YouTube also, I just put it in that stream so that whenever I have to travel, I have to go. And you know, Alhamdulillah, I travel all Pakistan and also globally as well. So that is what he was mentioning it, thank you.
Any, any more questions? You have, or has a question.
But no one has to sit here as a courtesy. If you want to go, it's perfectly all right. Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
Jazakallah Khair for coming. As you discussed about emotional intelligence, often we see the reaction on people, you know. A reaction on a situation from a 25 years old versus a 35 years old versus a 45 years old versus a matured person 55 years old. It's always different, we see. So what is the reason why? I know it's lack of the blood and food and lot of the things has to do with it. But yet at this other, other hand, we also see when things happen emotionally, whatever happens, something wrong or right, a reaction from a weaker person is a different versus from a stronger person is outside. If they see a black guy which is 300 pounds, weighing six, height six, six foot plus, nobody will mess around with him. What, when he, when he comes to the masjid, he will see a weaker brother, he'll start to fight with him, you know, use all the abusive language that you discussed about. So why is there so much difference?
Right. Okay, right. See, there are about 20,000 known visible different species in this planet. And there are millions more which are not visible, like bacteria, like viruses. Humans are distinct from them because they are unique. If you see goats, there is, not that this is Khaala goat, this is Kalsum goat. If you say horses, this is not Anwar horse or this is, right? All horses are same, all goats are same, all fish are same, all monkeys are same. But no two human beings are same. Don't you think it's, it's unbelievable? If you look at lions, you cannot say, oh, this is the lion, I met him 10 years back. But I know when he will call me, if we are alive by that time, 30 years after, just you say hello, I say, oh Mujeeb bhai. Not only that he is unique in his all beings, he is unique even his accent, unique. So this is unbelievable. Why other animals is not distinguishable? If you have got 40 goats, you cannot distinguish them, which one is which, which one is which goat? But humans are unique. Actually, they are not unique because some humans have three eyes, some has two eyes, some has got one eye over the forehead, other one has on the index finger. No, 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 all of us, because two eyes, one nose, one, two lips, one tongue, but still we are unique. And this uniqueness goes from the physical being up to our inner being, right? And this inner being, uniqueness of inner being is called our inner lens. When we were born, the circumstances through which we passed, what was the educational status of our parents, what was financial status of our parents, what was our religious teaching, what was the circumstances around us, how our elder brother behaved with us, what was the situation at our school? So this, these situations are so variable that each one of us has got a different lens. So the, your worldview, you are a Muslim, you are a Pakistani, you lives in this place, you, you, you know, have your prayer here, he also does the same. But both of you have got a different worldview. And that is the uniqueness of the human. This is why you cannot generalize behaviors for human beings. And this is why we have that variability you are talking about. There may be a person who is very weak, he is not 300 feet, 300 pounds and he is not six foot four, but people are afraid of him, although he is a frail person, thin person. Depends upon what type of lens he's, he has been through, right? So, so this is, so this is my response to it. We are not same. So there is, nothing can be generalized on us. And this uniqueness is the beauty.
Insha Allah, Jazakallah Khair, Dr. Javed Akbal, for your time. Once again, it's not, this is very engaging session, very thought-provoking. Insha Allah, hopefully we get to practice your, your suggestions that you have given. Jazakallah Khair for everybody participating. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.